And community members, welcome to our September Board Workshop. We have a full agenda. Again, I apologize for the late start. We're doing some work upstairs, but we'll try to be expeditious as we move through this. With that, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Pricefield?
Here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Rockwell?
President?
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Bass?
And Mr. Hile?
Here. Board members looking for an approval of the agenda.
Sir.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Pricefield?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Rockwell?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes. With that, we turn the evening over to Dr. Green and his team. I believe we are going to start with a rather significant announcement, and then we will move into our board monitoring scheduled fun.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, patrons and parents who are here today. Today, we got a pleasant surprise, and Christmas came in September for many of our teachers and staff due to a very special recognition and gesture of support from Google Fiber folks and Donors Choose. So at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Island Houston to come and share with us what this Christmas in September was like as we went through the day-to-day.
Thank you, Dr. Green, Mr. Hile, Board Chair, and to the board members, to our staff and guests that are here. Last week, I received a phone call from Doug White, the principal at Garfield Elementary, who said he had received a call from the PR people at Donors Choose. And if you're not familiar with donorschoose.org, it's a nonprofit website where teachers put their classroom projects request online, and they can be funded by individuals, corporations, or organizations. It's known as crowdfunding, and people can donate. So since 2000, more than a million people have donated $216 million to projects across the country. So the Donors Choose PR people talked to me, and they said they had an anonymous donor who was interested in funding three teacher projects at Garfield Elementary, and they wanted to make an announcement today at the school. So what really started out as a very simple, you know, announcement with three teachers became a major announcement because today, they announced, Google did, that not only were they funding the three teachers at Garfield, but the classroom request of every greater Kansas City area teacher in 16 counties, including Yandotte County in Kansas, were going to be funded. So that translated into 152 teachers, $194,370.90, all coming from Google. 13,842 students in the area will be impacted by the donation that they made today. So the mayor was there, Dr. Green was there, and again, we thought we were just coming two, three teachers, and then they make this national, you know, you know, area announcement. So our teachers at Garfield, tell you just really briefly, Ms. Bolts, her request came for materials, and she is going to create science centers for her students to get them excited about science. Ms. Reinhardt, her request was to create a classroom with a digital storytelling center, and Mr. McCarthy's request was for graphic novels to increase interest in reading and reading comprehension for ELL learners. So it was an exciting day. We took pictures. We'll be posting the information on the website, but the students were engaged. They came to the library and were part of it, as well as the principal, Mr. White, Dr. Green, and the folks from Google, as well as the mayor. So it was a great day in Kansas City Public Schools. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you for sharing.
Okay. The focus of this workshop is Board Policy 1.1 as it relates to our IMSA5 and our APR, which stands for Annual Progress Report from this year. And let me just share with you, as you can see the title here, APR 2014 Report, Data Analysis and Action Plan for Full Accreditation. What you're going to hear is an overview and an update of what progress took place over the past year, what our analysis is of that progress, and what our anticipated outcome will be this time next year, given the plan that we have in place and the strategies that we're going to put in place. The next slide will indicate to you where we think we are. Here's our media readers, if you will, in terms of how we present to the board, where we think we are, either compliant, developing, on target, or noncompliant, developing, on target, or compliant. And you can see, as it relates to the SMART goals that I discussed with you at the last board meeting, this is how we gauge whether we are compliant or noncompliant, or whether we're developing or on target, using the SMART goals that are specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-sensitive. That's how we gauge and hold ourselves accountable and present to you, as you hold us accountable. Also, you'll see where we are in relationship to our MPI. The next slide here is an indication overall of where we think we are. We think we are on target. The reason why we use that is that we have not fully executed everything, but we have a very good sense that we're right on target in the direction that we're headed. So with that, I'll turn things over to Dr. Vicki Merle, who will share with you where we are, what our assessment is of where we stand with regard to the State Department's Accountability System, IMSA5, our Annual Progress Report, and what our game plan is to bring us to full accreditation this time next year. Dr. Merle, floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and good evening, Board Chair and board members. As Dr. Green stated, we're going to walk through our IMSA5. And before we begin digging into the IMSA5 data, I wanted to walk back through quickly through the definitions. We use a lot of acronyms and a lot of words about our levels, so I just want to refresh your memories and those sitting in the audience so that everyone can follow me. IMSA5 measures the five standards: academic achievement, the subgroup achievement, college and career readiness. It also measures our attendance and our graduation rate. So we'll be looking at those five standards tonight at the district level. MPI stands for the MAP Performance Index. That is how we measure and receive our points. They have points assigned to below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced, and the number of students that you have that gets your MPI number. The APR is our Annual Progress Report. That is a report that was released in August that stated where we were and our status. And then, in that NPR report, is status, progress, and growth. That measures, is a measurement of the district or school levels of achievement, and it's always based on a three-year average. They're constantly looking at the prior two years versus the current two years. In those levels, you will see there's exceeding, on-track, approaching, and the floor. ELC, of course, stands for the intercourse assessments given at the high school, and then MAP stands for our Missouri Assessment Program that's administered at grades three through eight. So as we begin looking at where we've started at when the state shifted to IMSA5, we were in 2012 when that first occurred. The first draft came out, the district was setting at 22.5. We dug in and looked at the data and scrubbed that data and ended at 38 points. We know that provisional accreditation is at 70 points or 50 percent of the points. In 2013, our final APR report was 84 points or 60 percent. In 2013, the preliminary report came out. We were setting at 86.5. Every district is given two weeks after the preliminary report comes out to go through the data, to make sure that all of the data has been received and that we are in agreement with what DESI has produced. We have a two-week window for appeal, and from that, our final APR report that came out, once that we cleaned up the data and verified and then also responded to DESI with our appeals for the data to be, to match what our data is, we ended at 92.5, which is 66 percent. That is about, we are looking at about five points from moving, 5.5 to moving on up to our 98 points, which is full accreditation. And at the end, I'll close with going over our 2015 APR goals with you that lets you know that our target for this year is 110.5. Sorry. So this is what it looked like when Missouri, DESI first released our APR goals, I mean, our report, as you all walk you through what this screenshot looks like. You have the APR total goals, total points, and then you have the percent of points. As you can see here, DESI is only looking at 2013, 2014, and this year will be the third year in 2015. 2012 was a draft, so they don't count that yet in our report. So as you look at the IMSA5, again, there's the five standards that I spoke about at the beginning: academic achievement, subgroup, college and career readiness, attendance, and graduation rate. Across here, you will see the points possible under each one of those standards, the points earned by the district this year in SY14 for each one, and then the percent of those points earned. As you can see, for academics, last year, we earned 42.9 percent. This year, we increased to 64.9, which is about a 21 percent increase. Also, another big jump for us was our college and career readiness. Last year, we earned the 78.3. This year, we went to 85 percent. So that's another increase of almost seven percentage points for our college and career readiness. I keep hitting the wrong one. So how do we, how does the state pull that together? The district supporting data for the annual performance report is what I'm going to walk you through next. Each one of the screens inside of DESI sets up our five standards. This one is our academic achievement. In that, you have your ELA, your math, your science, and your social studies. But I want to draw your attention to that 50.5 exceeding. That is the growth that the district made this year in ELA and in MAP. I spoke also about the prior two years versus the current two years, the three-year average that the district, that the state uses. As you can see, in ELA, we kind of flatlined. It was very disappointing when we first opened up that file and saw that flatline with the work that we had done. It helped ease it a little bit when we began to dig into what the state had done and looked at the other districts and saw that statewide, all districts had taken pretty much close to a 3 percent drop. So our district, when other districts were dropping, we maintained, sustained, and saw significant growth within each of our achievement levels. So we were very excited about that. In mathematics, we had a slight gain that occurred between the prior two, about a 3.5, and in statewide in mathematics, they also took a drop of 2.7. So our district was able to maintain or increase when we saw the state, the districts around in the state seeing a decrease, and statewide, you can see that on the DESI website. The one piece that was really exciting for us was the exceeding in the growth, and I'm going to kind of pull that out for you and what that looks like. Growth measures in IMSA5 are designed to estimate the effectiveness of districts and of schools. The growth model is used for data for grades three through eight. When it was first rolled out, it focused on four through eight because it didn't have a third grade year, but now we have a score for third grade all the way up through eighth grade. I will talk you through Standard Two, which is subgroup, because significant growth indicates that the super-subgroups in the school on an average outperform non-super-subgroup students. We did not receive that exceeding growth in the subgroups. What that looks like is, a subgroup represents black, Hispanic, low-income students, students with disabilities, and English language learners. A super-subgroup is comprised of these five subgroups and include only students who are in one or more of the five identified subgroups. So when we get to subgroups, I just want to draw your attention to Standard Two. So I'm going to walk you through, and I do apologize that I keep doing that, I'm going to walk you through what student growth looks like for us. So if you follow me through this graph, this is the scale score breakdown. We're going to look at students out of our district that were in fifth and sixth grade. The first achievement group is below basic. You will see what the lowest minimum score is for below basic to the maximum score. Then you will come over, and the next one is the basic subgroup achievement level. Then you have proficient achievement level and advanced. If you come down to the scale below the graph, you are going to see a student A, which is blue; you're going to see a student B, which is red; a student C, and a student D. Let's first begin with student A. As you can see there, when student A was in fifth grade in the spring, when they took their MAP assessment, they received a scale score of 499, which is below basic. When student A was in sixth grade, they received a scale score of 601. It's still below basic. What you can see here is that student grew from 499 to 601. It's a 102-point scale score, but they are still about 30 points from moving to basic. But we're going in the right direction. I remember a year or two ago, when we first began looking at each individual student, and Dr. Green gave us the charge of not looking for just those students that were called bubble students or threshold students, but we are now teaching all students and moving all students. One thing that might be of concern to some districts is, we got no points for that student. What I would say to you is, we should cheer and be very, very, very proud of the work that we did in the district last year, because we can find students in almost every building, and I'll show you that in a few minutes, where we saw significant growth, and that's why we received the points that we received in those contents. So as you look at student B, they started in fifth grade at 621, which was still below basic. When they took their assessment as a sixth grader, they went to 634. That moved them to basic. That student grew 13 scale points, and the district received two points. Student C was in 659, which was basic, grew to 679, which was proficient. That student's scale score growth was 20 points. It received one point for the district. Student D was 635, which was basic, grew over that year as a sixth grader to 641, still basic, the district received zero points. The point of the graph is to show you that each individual student showed growth, and that is exactly what IMSA5 was designed to do: growth, progress, status. Moving the district, every student in every grade level, growing and moving and getting over into that next achievement level. So when we looked at significant growth...
Can I just add a point? If you go back to that slide, because I think it's important to emphasize, we have not, I just identified the students that are right at a certain threshold, and so we're going to try to get the points. This student, student A, for instance, and this is a real student, correct?
It is.
Over time, this student will be, will produce whatever we need as far as points, but we have to be patient with that student. We have to nurture that student, and we have to let that student develop and be him where he is, and allowing him, our herons, to grow to the level and show the kind of growth that we eventually will cross thresholds, but it's not just about getting, crossing the threshold to get points. And I think that's very, very important, that our approach is exactly what I think is what we want to see us do.
So as we looked at significant growth for all of our buildings, you will see on the far left that you have every school listed. In the middle, the ELA represents if they, a Y, if they had significant growth in their school, or an N, if they did not. The next column is math. In our ELA, 28 of the 31 buildings had significant growth. In mathematics, we had 24 schools that had significant growth. One point that I would point out with the significant growth, a couple of schools that were very proud of their MPI and their APR growth is Paseo and SWEC. So as we saw students moving across bandwidth, we may not have seen the growth in those two buildings, but I think at the end, you will see that they had very good, good progress made in those buildings. So as we look at science, and science is another achievement, is still an achievement, you can see here, again, I'm pointing out the prior two years with the current two years, and you can see for science that we had about a 7.6.4 gain. If you come down to social studies, we're very proud of the work that's occurring in our social studies area. We had a 19.7 gain in our social studies from the prior two years to the current two years. As we look at subgroup, the reason that I really pointed out subgroup for you and wanted you to see that is, if you look here at growth for subgroup and follow where I'm taking you across, you'll see that in ELA in subgroup, we had 49.3. If you remember, the super-subgroup must outperform the non-subgroup to achieve that points awarded. We had good growth in our subgroups, but they did not outperform. If you remember, in ELA in the academic piece, that was 50.5. You look here, it's 49.3. These two areas were very hard for Dr. Green to wrap his head around and agree to what the state had said, because it's almost like we have to outperform ourselves, because if you remember, 97 percent of our students are a subgroup. So now, we're looking at a super-subgroup, which means that they're in one of the five categories, and they're in one of the five categories twice, three times, four times, and they must outperform that significant growth, statistically significant growth than the non-subgroup. But you can see, our subgroup did a good job. They're coming right up behind where we want them to be. I also wanted to point out the progress that was made between the prior two years of our subgroup and the current two years of our subgroup. ELA flatlined. In mathematics, our subgroup had a 3.5 increase. We're very, very proud of that increase that was made there in our mathematics for our subgroup students. In science and social studies, I'll bring you to that. In science, we had a 6.4 gain, and in social studies, our subgroup came right along behind with a 19.7 gain. Very proud of the work that's occurring with our subgroups. I can tell you that Dr. Sherman has spent about at least two days every, the last two weeks digging into the subgroup of our students with learning disability, really working with my assessment team to figure out exactly and pinpointing and being able to drill down for our students. It's really exciting to see people really wanting to dig into the data and look at the data and see what that looks like for their subgroups. So when we look at college and career readiness, that is standard number three. If you look at the 3.1.3, that would be the very first one here of the college and career readiness. That standard is what we measure our ACT, our SAT, our compass, and our ASVAB. Those are the scores there. As you can see, we had 44.5, and the increase was 48.2, which is about a 3.7 gain, almost four points. If you look to, which puts us as approaching, if you remember, we had exceeding, on-track, approaching, and the floor. So we're getting very, very close to making status and moving to on-track there. With the dual credit, 3.4, that is your dual credit. That's where you're looking at your AP, your IB, your TSA, which is your technical skills assessment for our CTE programs, and your dual credit. Our ECA, Early College, also fits into this category. If you look at your prior two, we had 28 percent, and we have increased that to 33.8 percent, which is a 5.7. One area that I'd really like to point out in that, it was an area of great concern about three years ago, that we had kind of been stagnant. If you look at the percent of students, it was, in 2012, 24.8 percent of our students were taking those advanced courses. We have moved that to 36.2. That's a really good growth for us. That's 10 percent, and so we will continue to look at that and grow that program. The last one, 3.5-6, you are looking at placement. This is our placement post-secondary, our military, our employment that is related to the CTE completers. And that is what you're looking there. We have 78 percent, and for the prior two years, and we've increased that to 80.2. That is about a 1.5. That is an area that the district has done a really good job of tracking and has always been a very positive area for our district. So as we look at attendance this year, the schools and Dr. Cordova and his team did a really good job with working on our attendance and bringing that attendance up. We have moved that from 70.8 to 73 as an average from the, in the prior two years to the current two years. But again, I'd like to draw your attention to last year, the 69.2 to an increase of 77.4. So we had some really good increase that took place in our attendance. And I'll close with our graduation rate. In our graduation rate, as you look at that, you will see I have five-year and six-year graduation rate. Remember, the year starts when the student is a first-year freshman. So if they're a first-year freshman, and then they leave that district and come into our district, it's up to the district that's receiving to find, to do a match file. The state does release a match file, and that just happened last year, when, under IMSA5, it was quick to find out where they were. Finally, we received that, that file to begin to really be able to track where we are in graduation rate. What the five and six-year does for us, though, it really assists us with our ELL students. This year alone, we've begun to track how many 17-year-olds are entering the area and wanting to come to school that have had no prior education. So in teaching them to read and to write and to speak English, so I guess there should be speak first, read and write, and then put them through the high school courses, we need at least six years. And by the state moving from the five to the six-year graduation, that really allows us to be able to not push kids through, but be able to take the time to make sure that they move through and get where they should be by the time that they're in. The state allows districts, and not just ours, but several districts, districts are using the five, six-year, four, five, and six, you're allowed to pick the best, the score that you receive the best on. So what does that look like? When you look at the percentage of the APR for schools, this is how, you saw how our district received the 92.5. So we wanted to make the famous slide that was made last year that showed us where our schools fell as far as the APR. So let me first walk you through the slide again. On the far left is the names of all of our schools, and then you see the percent of points earned, and there's a difference that you have to remember, because our elementary schools are only held accountable for 70 points, or 50 percent, which most people would, of the 70. So then you have the percent of points earned for 2014. The green represent those schools that are fully accredited. Yellow represents those schools that are provisionally accredited, and pink represents those schools that are unaccredited. In 2013, we had 13 schools that were green. We had six schools that were yellow, and we had 12 schools that were pink. In 2014, we have 12 schools, 11, yeah, 12 schools that are fully accredited. We have eight schools provisionally, and we have 11 unaccredited. We have two of the 11 that are setting their two percentage points away from the next level, so right there on that cuff. One real positive, if you look at Paseo, they went from a provisionally accredited school to a fully accredited school. You will also see that we have a couple of our yellow schools that moved out of the unaccredited that we were really pleased to see and moved into the provisional, one being Southwest. But I highlight to you, 15 buildings made progress. Border Star, Pitcher, Hartman, Faxton, Banneker, Truce, Page, King, Holiday, Melcher had the highest gains for our elementary schools. It's also a SIG school. It had 30 percent gain this year. Very proud of the work that's went on at Melcher. AC Prep High School, East, SWEC, highest points achieved, a percent achieved, 38 percent. Northeast and Paseo. One of the areas that we looked at that I wanted to really talk about is AC Prep Elementary, which we see here went from 14 percent to 17.1, but still sitting at the bottom. At first, when we first just looked at their MPI, we saw that AC Prep Elementary had a, I want to make sure, if you just looked at their, they had a 3 percent gain in ELA, but they had almost a 12 percent gain in mathematics. But we call, we have what we call the bowl effect. But we call, we have what we call the bowl effect. AC Prep Elementary's had three principals in the last three years. In two thousand twelve, they had really high test scores. In two thousand thirteen, they had a significant drop. Our principal this last year took that and increased it, but because she went from a three hundred, down, and then bounced back up, but she's still setting about twenty-five points from two thousand twelve, she won't receive the credit in the APR. But you can see that she's bringing it back up in the right direction. She's just setting in a bowl. She's got to, in order to get rid of the two thousand twelve release off this year, so now she'll be looking at just two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and the climb continues, she'll come out of the pink this next year, there's no doubt in my mind. So when we look at this, even though you may still see schools that are setting in the unaccredited, we can definitely go school by school and begin to show the growth that's taken place in that school and where they increased in the MAP performance index. So as we move forward to this next year and setting our goals, again, we've set the preliminary goals up to look just like the state does. You have your academic achievement, the possible points earned, the points that we earned in SY fourteen, so that you can see the points, and where our MPI is. The goal for the MPI is to have all of us scoring a three hundred or above. As you can see in ELA, the goal is three oh three point seven. In math, three oh nine. In science, two eighty-nine point nine. And in social studies, three thirty-nine point two. In ELA subgroups, you can again see the points earned, the MPI scores for SY fourteen, and then you'll see the points, the scores needed. And out to the side gives you your APR subtotal or subscore. When you come over to our standard three, which is the college and career readiness, you'll see where we have our three point one, our three point four, and three point five. You see the points possible, points earned, where we scored last year, SY fourteen, and where our targets or our goals are for SY fifteen, and then the total points. Then you see our attendance, how many points we scored this year, which was seven point five out of ten. Our score this year was seventy-seven point four. Our goal for this current year is seventy-nine point four, for another total of seven point five. And then as you come down, you'll see the four-year, the five-year, and the six-year graduation rate. Points possible, points earned for this current year, and there is our score for this current year. And then here's the percent we need going into our year, which we will track, we will audit, and we will monitor to ensure that we are moving those students across and into the graduation. Questions?
All right, board members, there's a lot of data there. Let's start with one round, and then we will add more as needed. Mr. Rogers, why don't we start with you this time?
Dr. Morella, do we still have the data teams in each school, and how are they functioning?
We do have them in each school, and when Mr. Gallin and Dr. Sanders present behind me, they're going to talk you through how we're taking that to the next level.
This may be just a follow-on to that. In what way is this data discussed with parents and families in each school, and how, how do they engage in a conversation about what, what all of this mean?
Well, Dr. Sanders will also address that with you, but I do want you to know that I, you know, I oversee federal, and we have our fall annual Title I meeting, and at that time, every building principal, according to their school improvement plan, does present their data. And then we have the spring annual where we talk about how we did and where we got from there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes, I had a question on the NPIs.
Yes.
Looking at many of our elementaries and taking these reductions, the change, who was your, how would you maybe interpret those?
Okay, is it the APR? Okay.
No, I think it's MPI.
MPI.
Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and the other.
Oh, okay.
Or it's a year.
Okay. I think that, I didn't have that in the, the presentation. Dr. Green wanted to keep that at the district level, so that's the district level, and I apologize that when they printed that, they must have printed and put that in there. What I can tell you from us digging into that and working through that with you, is that we, if you isolate it, it's seven schools. We had, let me get my cheat notes out because I may have it myself in here. Yes, I got it. When you look at that, that you're looking at, yes, in ELA, we had seven schools that were of a concern to us, and as you're looking at that, we have pulled that apart by building, by classroom, and began to look at that and those buildings that are there. But you're also seeing most of the other buildings are ten percent or less. And then you have those green schools that did show growth that you're looking at, and then you have the yellow schools that are kind of there in the middle. When you look at those seven schools that we have laid out for us, and then in mathematics, we have, I've also isolated that down, that we have six schools that went backwards on both lists, ELA and math. So it's something that I can certainly put into a Friday packet and dig into that, Dr. Green, for them.
Certainly, and the other thing is that we give each school an MPI goal. Each school, at the assessment team, looks at where they were in the past, and we set an MPI goal, and so this is our goal. This is not the state's goal, and whether they either made or did not, and we set a pretty high bar for each individual school to, based on its own circumstance, to reach a certain goal, and this is a reflection of how many of those schools either met or came close or did not meet a goal that we set for them on their MPI. The change, that's what that represents.
I'm understanding, is the twenty thirteen an actual and the twenty fourteen a set? I'm trying to interpret the information. Was the twenty thirteen that's listed, was that an actual?
Yes.
And then the twenty fourteen was what was set?
It's actual.
It's actual? Okay, well then, I guess my question is, and when I'm looking at that, if these are both actual, I'm counting sixteen that went, took a decrease in both ELA and math.
Yes, and I, but when I pull out mine, I'm pulling out those that took a significant drop. I'm pulling, I'm pulling out, and I hate to call out the school names because others can't see what we see, but I'm pulling out those that are in red. Not all, but those that are in red. That's the ones that I'm pulling out because those were the ones that was a big red flag for Dr. Green and I. And if you look on the right side, and then, Dr. Hartsfield, the other thing that I pulled out is which schools were on both lists that were in red, because those are the target schools for this year. When you come down to the high school, you will see we have one school in red that is of great concern to us, and then you will be very, very proud, when, that's when you're looking there, you will see the growth that happened at Paseo East and AC Prep Upper. You can see the MPI gains that happened there, especially the growth for AC Prep Upper High School. It's at the very bottom of that page. So this was the change that occurred, and another really positive is three of the six SIG schools. So when you look at SIG schools, oh, this, yes, the school improvement schools, those are the ones that received the grant and the additional funding. We had really good progress that's made there. But it is those schools that we targeted red that we're taking a deep dive into exactly what happened there, looking at every area and really studying that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Robinson?
One of the questions I have, I'm looking at the preliminary goals against the summary report. So for number two, the subgroup achievement of about four point five points that we earned in fourteen. And we, what was the preliminary goal last year for that?
Are you talking about the?
For thirteen?
So are, when you say the preliminary, are you talking about the targets we set for SY thirteen?
Yes.
And the, are you talking about the green that we had there?
So the nine, if you look at nine point five, that's the target for the next year, for this year, right?
Yes.
So what was the target last year?
Last year would have been six point five.
Six point five. Okay, and then the, if you flip back to the next one with attendance, I just wanted to make sure I was reading this right. When we look at the summary report, the attendance said that we earned four points, but it looks like, is it seven point five or is it four?
We earned seven point five.
Seven point five.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Let me get to that screen.
Am I reading the summary report wrong where it says attendance four?
When I see it here on the screen, unless you have a different, when I have seven point five there, is this what you're looking at?
I'm talking about the summary report. So this one where it says four.
Oh, that is correct. We earned, we earned four. You are correct.
So we didn't earn?
No, we did not earn the seven point five. That was our goal for this year, was the seven point five. And that is our goal for next year. Yes, we earned four.
Okay.
Yes. You are correct.
I'm on the, we're put the, no, I'm talking about attendance where it says four point zero, and then there it says seven point five.
Yes, you are correct. Seven point five was our goal, and we were within one point of making that.
Okay.
So when we talked about that today, I changed it.
Okay. And so my, so the other question that I had was around the subgroup achievement. I mean, it would be really helpful for us to get some disaggregated data around our subgroups. And if I'm understanding you correctly, the, the reason why that is, because you talk about a lot of progress being made, so there was progress, but we didn't get points for them. Is that what you're saying?
Well, we received some points, as you can see from the chart, but we did not receive the growth points.
The growth points.
Yes, and the growth points is what we were concerned about, because we find it very difficult for our super subgroup to outperform our non-subgroup, and that is how the state lists that information.
There's a point at which I have a real concern about, the spirit in which this was created does not necessarily match up with what we look like, our demographic as a district. I think the spirit of the subgroup was the kind of no child, no children left behind, and you see frequently, students, schools that, back in the old days when they had AYP, were bringing up the schools of excellence, but what got lost when we disseminated the data were their minority students or their specialized students were overshadowed, and they didn't pay attention, so that became the subgroup. And so the state, I guess, wants you to make sure that that subgroup's progressing. Our demographic, we are a subgroup, our whole aggregate. We are a majority-minority school district, and so that doesn't apply in terms of outperforming our, our subgroup. We're almost asking us to outperform our overall demographic to our, to ourselves, since we reflect what the characteristics of the subgroup are in our majority.
Well, just because there is, just because we are a majority of the subgroup does not mean that we cannot recognize the inequities that are present within our data or within our performance.
Agreed. It's just when they reward points on the basis of that, my concern is that there is, I don't think it's, we're, I would say, let's say, bone jack in terms of their subgroup versus our, our subgroup, so I'm sorry, but the end of that whole comparison, having us match up the same in terms of what our demographics are versus those groups.
I, I guess one of the things that I grapple with is that if we scored thirty-two point one percent, which is, you know, if we mirror this to, you know, how we look at a gray card for children, that's failing. And so how do we communicate this positivity amongst ourselves, amongst the community, when that is so low? Because I hear the positivity that you're giving, but I think that we need to think about how do we communicate that.
And I think, too, the piece that even though we did not receive points for the growth, we still saw, it wasn't statistically significant, but we had significant growth for our subgroup. And the key that the state has really stated in this is that this is about moving all students to the next level, and we can demonstrate here that we are moving all students. We didn't just handpick what got us points. We are teaching from below basic to proficient to advanced, and we're stretching, pulling, and pushing all students. It's the first time that I feel like in the last two years, and I've been in the district for a while, that we're not having programs or really, you know, trying to help all students, but still just focusing on those threshold or bubble kids. And I really felt like we had a direction given, that we are going to get at the heart of teaching, we're going to know each individual student, and we're going to move them. And I believe, and I think a lot of research shows, that as you start building that foundation and moving those students and the growth starts taking place, it's not long till we can get them over the next performance levels, and we can. So we stayed with about thirty percent at proficient and advanced, but we moved a whole lot. And in moving them, the next level is now getting them across the achievement level, and that's the goal. And so now, every teacher that received their students, before this was even released, where we could show the NPIs and the APR, they already had their students' data setting their impulse, waiting for them to pull it and know where their student left off and where they need to take them to, and how many points are short from going to that next level. They're starting with that information, and that's a real piece and a key. Another piece and a key is as we move to the common core, we changed our assessment. So no longer are we just trying to predict, but now we're going to teach, now we're going to move, and now we're looking at all the clusters and knowing how each student does in the continuum of learning. And in doing that, we're also going to assess our science every time we assess reading and math, so that we know how our students are doing in all three of the core areas. So it's really important to us, I, you know, a lot of people think I'm nuts, but I can't wait to get the first assessment because I need to know where we are. I need to get the compass in place. So we feel like, even though, again, we haven't demonstrated with the points of hitting status, we are still knocking on that back door, and this is sustainable growth, this is not a quick fix.
I guess for me, I would like to see more data as to, when we're talking about, especially in high school, the EOCs, going back to, especially like in math, for example, talking into like the Algebra I, again, I think we spoke about this last year, I would like to see the numbers of how many children are actually taking this test that are passing Algebra I and that we receive those points for. So I'm, from my understanding, not every child is taking the test because they did not pass Algebra I. Is that correct?
If they did not pass Algebra I, the state requires us to delay them, put them back in Algebra I, and they take the test, and they take the course again, and then they take the assessment. That is statewide, that is not something we're just doing in Kansas City public schools.
Right. But are we only exempt that one time if they're delayed, or do we say they don't pass again? Do they get retained again for a second year?
They should, yes. I mean, if, they must pass the course, Algebra, and we know Algebra is a gatekeeper, but they must pass Algebra and then they take their assessment, and then they move on to the next level.
Correct. So for me, for that, that specific example, I would like to see the numbers as far as what is the population in our seven high schools that are enrolled in the English Language Arts, the ELA, the math, social studies, and science.
Sure.
And then having the number as well as the actual children that passed the course and took the test to get these scores.
Sure.
My concern is, again, with My concern is, again, with the children that are not passing and that are in those red zones, of course, I think we probably will get a presentation on this, but looking forward and bringing this back up would be, what is the plan for our kids that are having to be retained or are still in below basic? I would like to see that presentation later on, that discussion go on, on involving. But for me, right now, I would like to see the actual numbers of children, population that we have in the schools, actual children enrolled in these classes versus the children that actually took the test compared to the number of children that did not take the test because they'd not passed the course and where we're getting these points. And then also, a little bit more accuracy too, like on our college and career ready and placement and attendance. I know attendance has been a big issue and I applaud a lot of the schools that really did dramatic changes, and I saw that this past year. So I really am going to acknowledge the hard work that was done on that. And I know we're still continuing to improve because I've seen some wonderful, wonderful parents and principals really getting their kids to school and, and going to the spring break and tutoring sessions. So I commend you on that. But I would also like to see as far as, how many children do we have in actual IB, AP, dual credit? And I know our number's increasing in the early college. And then also the breakdown of our actual ACT scores per school and then our district average, which I think last year we improved to 16.1, correct?
I, I have, I have, I have that where I presented last year when I gave you the EOC scores, because they came back five days after they were administered. I gave you that breakdown by students that took the test from, in, in prior years, so you could gauge, were we testing more, were we testing less? So that's a quick one that we can upload. Also with the number of students that are in each of the courses by school. I think we've already done that, but I can, we can certainly resubmit that and, and get that to you.
Well, the data would be the children enrolled versus the children that did not pass, that, that did not take, because they didn't pass, so they weren't eligible, they retained that one year, like you said, so they couldn't take the test. So that's the number I'm wanting us to see and compare, how many children are, are not, are being retained and not taking the test.
Sure, sure.
And then just the basic average of what our ACT score improved, if any, to from the 16.1 last year. And then a breakdown of each school's ACT. But I do commend the, the work that's going on at early college, because I do know we increased the number of students there. And just kind of to see how many, I think we did get in our Friday report about the IB, but my main concern is really about what's the plan going on for the students that are not passing and being retained? What is, what is the work that's going to be done to get those children that are below basic, those red schools that you spoke about in, in the packet here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so most, most of what you asked for, I think, has already been provided in the Friday packet. We can make sure that that's available to you. And then you're requesting at some point in the future that we have a presentation around what we're doing to providing services to students who are struggling. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Hand?
So, I'm looking at all this data and, you know, it looks like we're trending in the right direction and this is good. But as I read sort of 1.0, in general, but 1.1 specifically, there's, there's a, and I've asked this question before, I think, there's something about education that is more abstract than this. And I think some people have even studied and argued that, that that other thing can improve things like test scores. And so I want to know what we are doing or what maybe we can even do to make these tests incorporate that part of education? I mean, is that just off the table completely? Is there even discussion about that? Is it embodied at all in common core? Sorry, not common core, whatever we're calling it now, moving forward? Or how do we, how do we elevate that as part of something that's really, really important in education?
Well, if you recall, the last board meeting's presentation, that was, it was really about that same thing. How do we, number one, address the state's accountability system, which we, we don't have much of a choice. But now that we have at least removed the shackle of unaccredited, how do we, goal number two, dealt with moving toward not only just the argumentative literacy piece, which moves us toward the Missouri learning standards, which is, breaks us out of just the more rudimentary analysis that you have here, but also looking at the five Cs of communication, collaboration, creativity, caring, as well as, I think many have left one of them out, but the, the idea of moving toward project-based models that enable students to develop the kind of skills that will need to be successful. And at the same time, addressing the accountability system where, where we have gotten into trouble in the fours, it looked like when I came to the district, there was not necessarily much attention paid to this part of the, of the accountability system as, as much as it could have been, to make sure that we stay in alignment with what the state's expectations are. And, and we were given a pass for years of not doing that. So we're doing that, but we're also being very bifocal in looking at what students need to know and be able to do in the 21st century. And that's within my goal number two, smart goal number two, to move us in that direction.
Maybe it's because I went to a luncheon today that was about arts education, but I guess what I'm thinking is, is there any avenue for us to influence what, what these tests should be? Because they don't encapsulate everything that education is. Or, or is that not the point of, am I missing the point of these tests altogether? I'm just wondering if there is even an avenue for us to make these assessments really assess what, what we're trying to do here? Because I know we're, I know we're providing, trying to provide greater options right now, currently, and expand curriculum and all that kind of stuff, but there's.
Yeah, I mean, you're right on my hot button. If I were to give a, give a, give a chance to really go on assessment reform, because the kinds of things that I think are important for students to know and be able to do, MSIP V never even asked about. It may be critical thinking a bit, but the communication, collaboration, creativity, caring, those kinds of things don't necessarily show up on any of the measurements that MSIP V calls upon us to. But I think those, the ability to do those things has a lot to do with whether a student's very successful or not in the future. So there's a disconnect in my mind. But that is a long process of assessment reform and advocacy. In the meanwhile, we labor under this system that I, I don't, that is very punitive and, and to me, not a reflection on what students should know and be able to do necessarily going forward. So I have a philosophical disagreement with this accountability system, yet I can't pretend like it doesn't exist because so much is at stake. So you will hear me talk more and more about this now that we've, part of the deal is to get out of this, to prove that we can do this system, so we can advocate for change in the system. Because if you're doing poorly, you're not, if you're unaccredited, your argument carries less weight because you're, you know, this impression would be that you're just mad because you didn't do well. And so my goal is to work us into a situation where we can turn on the system that we have had to endure and say that that is not the best system for what children need.
Yeah, there's a lot here. Starting with, I used to agree with you on this point, but the more I think about it, I think I disagree with your disagreement. I agree that the assessments of our children absolutely are not measuring the things that we, as a team, have said that we wanted for them. The totality of it, obviously, they measure, you know, just a small piece of it. But we've got it, so we're going to dig into it. But I would start my questions with a preface of thinking, of saying, the more I look at this data, the more I think we need to stop looking at this particular data. You know, over the past four years, obviously, I had some influence to the fact that this is the data that we pay lots of attention to. And I think it was the right call at that time to be focused on our MSIP scores and really looking at how are we progressing alongside our peer institutions? But as we raise up out of the mire of unaccreditation and provisional accreditation, you know, and we'll get full accreditation, the trajectories has been described, you know, we're obviously going to get that. It's kind of a foregone conclusion now, it's a matter of when. I, I think we have an obligation as a board to stop talking about MSIP V, because this does not, as I look at this data, this is us talking about MSIP, the goal we set for your performance last year was an MSIP V goal, you know, not a literacy goal, not a math goal, for example. And so I, I would suggest as a board, you know, kind of to, you know, Robinson's point is that I don't think we're going to get at, I don't think looking at the subgroup data as it's presented here is going to get us at looking at disparity, just because of the way that it's calculated by MSIP. It does not meet our needs as a governing body. You know, so to some of my specific questions. First macro and then to micro. The first macro question is, attendance declined. Kind of what is the vision, you know, for addressing that? Because it wasn't a subtle decline either. Last year, we earned 7.5 points in this area. This year, we earned zero points in this area. So my first question is, you know, kind of what's, what's the big, and I'm, I'm not looking for the detail vision, but like, what's the big picture vision of what worked that we were doing and what didn't work that we're going to improve?
Yeah. So you're, you're saying that in, you're looking at the 2012 to 2013 to 2014, and you're seeing that it was at 72 and then it declined to 69%? And then it, and increased to 74.4, 77.4, correct? Is that what you're following?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the overall points possible. Last year, SY13, we got 7.5 points. Am I understanding that correctly? On our overall MSIP V standard, you know, out of, there are 10 points available, we got 7.5 of them. This year, we got 4.0 of them.
And, and those points are awarded off of the increase between the prior two and the current two. So it's not a straight average. So that would be, remember last year, we were looking at a, we did not have the third year. So we were looking at 2012 and 2013. So now this year, you've got the current two and the prior two. So you're looking at 70% for the prior two and 73.3. So they saw a three, about a 3%, 2.5% increase, which gave us the four points. So they're awarding off of the average of the prior two and the current two. The state no longer looks at straight across, more does the state no longer look at the daily average attendance. It's now 90% in attendance, 90% of the time. So it went to the 90-90. So when we shifted in 2012, remember that's draft data, that was MSIP IV. Then you shifted in 2013 to MSIP V, 90-90. And so when they calculated 12, they were not using the new formula. They tried to roll that new formula in, and so that's why we saw the dip, because it was two different formulas. So when you look at 12, we are looking at the MSIP IV in 12. That's why the state is not putting 12 on its front page. You only see 13 and 14 because that's when we are really under and using the new matrix, correct?
Got it. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, shout out to Desi. So then the other question, you know, the macro level subgroup achievement, but as you've already described, our, for our subgroup is basically our entire population. So I don't even want to ask about subgroup at the moment, I want to just look at overall. So you've got MSIP V 2014, percent of points earned, it's the red, white, and blue pa-
Okay.
Red, yellow, and green page.
Yes, okay. By building.
So, Dr. Main, we've got really, really mixed reviews here. And so while the overall trend is up, you know, we had 12 schools that declined overall, you know, from SY13 to SY14. And even though in, you know, the majority of those cases, the decline was not significant enough to have them drop in classification, obviously, in a few cases it was, because we went from 13 that were qualified for full accreditation down to 12. While on the bonus side, we went from 12, you know, that were unaccredited on this list to 11. I mean, so it's a really, you know, as you kind of trended out this data, it, you know, it's going upward, but in a really wavy way. Kind of what?
Yes. And, and Mr. West, if I can, if I can kind of speak to that, because.
Is, is it that we should expect that each year, you know, a third of our schools are going to see declines? Or kind of what's, what's the vision for and strategy around making sure that, you know, it's a much more continued, because some of these declines are massive?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And, and the one point I'd want to make is, is what is so tough is what happens at the school level in the MPI with the MAP Performance Index and their CCR? And they're, you know, at the high school, they do all five standards. That necessarily can show you a growth or a decrease, because if you, let's just take King. If you look at King, when you look at it by building by the MPI, you see a red. When you look at King on this APR percent, you see an increase. So you can't just, you can't just look at one point of data. This completely shows you, and when I met with school leadership and we were walking building by building and walking through this, we could see, you've got to look at multiple points of data, which takes longer than probably I should still be standing here taking, but it's very confusing and you have to go to the building level and then see what the building level, because remember, the state's off of three years, we're looking year by year by year. So that's why you're going to see the flex up and down, but sometimes the schools are fighting what I call that bowl effect. A higher and they drop, and then they got to dig up.
Right, which goes back to my, why I think as a board, we have to stop, look, consider, I think we need to consider, stop looking at MSIP data and maybe look at MPI data, you know, but, you know, as I look at this sheet that talks, goes through MPI data, the effect that you describe is apparent in the other direction. There are multiple schools that are in massive declines in ELA and math, but when you look at the MSIP percentage, they're actually improving.
That APR, yes.
Which lets me think, particularly at the elementary level, I am suddenly much less concerned about the other MSIP points that they are getting, and I'm much more concerned about the MPI points that they're not getting. And so that's why I say, is, you know, as a board, I think we need to really consider, I think it's been the right call for the past few years, but I think we really need to consider no longer having our focus as a governing body, obviously like the administrative staff to focus, but our focus as a governing body, moving away from MSIP overall and looking toward whether MPI or whatever other, you know, assessments that we use for it. But the variability between the two, I don't think gives parents or the community, you know, an appropriate insight into, into how we're really doing. Because while we are trending up, you know.
Is, is, is something that's even more confusing. I, I think I concur with your, your point. Well, the goal of this meeting was to share with you what has been embargoed for the last, and we couldn't share it because it was embargoed. So part of this was to disclose what we were almost kept from saying anything about for the last two or three weeks and so on. So we were trying to be transparent in this.
Yeah, kind of the summary question here is with these schools and, and my math is the same as yours, doctor. I come up with six schools that, when I'm looking at MPI data, I have tremendous concerns about, because of the magnitude of the declines on both sides of the ledger. And so I'm, I'm assuming with the rest of your presentation, you're going to say, what are we going to do? You know, what are we doing there? I would also highlight, well, I won't name names about the declines. African Center in College Prep to our academy had tremendous gains. I think anybody who did a walkthrough two years ago at the high school and a walkthrough last year under the new principal, wouldn't be surprised by the gains that are shown here on paper. And so there's anecdotal evidence that leadership matters, but whether it's around leadership, support, or transition, or whatever, you know, the- support, or transition, or whatever, you know, the six schools that I'm probably picking at the same ones you are, you know, what is our vision for, how are we going to turn those around?
Yes. Okay.
Dr. Green, the floor is yours for continuing your presentation.
Okay, this time, you know, in the answer to the question about our game plan going forward and our strategy, you will hear that from Dr. Goen as well as from Dr. Sanders, because this was what happened. Now we're talking, or be more focused about what we're going to do about what we, what has happened. Mr. Yellen?
Mr. Howe, Dr. Green, school board members, cabinet, and members of the audience. I'm a member of the Kansas City Public School staff, and I'm quite proud. I came to this school district seven years ago, and what we've been able to accomplish in the last two years is something to be impressed by. And so as I stand before you tonight, Mr. Rogers almost stole my thunder by bringing up data teams, but I want to talk a little bit about what we feel like we did well and what we're going to be doing as we move forward. And certainly looking at the data teams and the professional learning communities was one of the first things that we've considered. We feel like the, those two processes gained us a lot last year as we moved towards provisional accreditation, but we also feel like we can do them better. And so as we look at professional learning communities and data teams, we have rubrics we've identified, we'll be evaluating where schools are performing in those two areas, and then we'll be going in and working with them individually and together with professional development and additional support, and we will continue to monitor them quarterly throughout the year to make sure that they continue to progress and even get better at the work that they're doing. In addition to that, we will look at assessments. We're going to look at assessments a little differently this year. We're going to ask our schools to use formative assessments more than what they have in the past. Now, formative assessment is an assessment that a teacher can give almost daily, it's something they can give very quickly, and it's a quick monitor for them to determine if what they have taught has actually been learned by their students. And so we're going to be asking our teachers to develop more formative assessments on their own and administer those. We think this will help in the data team process. We also think it's going to be an essential tool for us to use as we move into the use of smarter balance-like assessments, or assessments that they're going to be using to measure progress with the Missouri Learning Standards. We have sample smarter balance assessments, we have those from not only our own state, but from other states, and we will be asking our teachers to utilize those kind of assessments as they work with their students throughout this year. In addition to that, we'll be giving the NWEA, Dr. Morello has already described that to you and how we'll be utilizing it this year. We'll be working with our teachers on September 26th to make sure they have a clear understanding of how they can use that data and actually measure students' progress. And that gets back to the conversation that Mr. West was just having, it's another form of data that we could utilize to help us determine whether our kids are actually progressing or not. Now, the area that I'm probably most proud of, and one of the areas that has had to make probably the greatest change, is our curriculum. Throughout all of last year, we knew that the Missouri Learning Standards were going to be what we would be assessed on this year. It would be what the state would determine as what the students in our state should be able to know and be able to do. And so we had curriculum staff, we had people like Dr. Trinity Davis, Marcelina Leros, and other members of our staff working to rewrite that curriculum to align it to the Missouri Learning Standards. We involved teachers and we involved other people in the process of developing this new curriculum. Now, let me point out a few things about it. For one thing, we are going to add to it quarter, quarterly performance events. Now, this is a much more extensive assessment that would be given each quarter, but it's being done to cross, go over the interdisciplinary areas across all four cores. It's the kind of assessments that's going to be asked of our students when it comes to the assessing Missouri Learning Standards. In addition to that, we will emphasize our argumentative and expository writing. Again, writing is an area that we need to focus in on much more extensively than what we have in the past, and our new curriculum has that in it, in an extensive way. Now, with the Missouri Learning Standards, because we go much deeper into the, these standards, they have to be clustered, and that's going to be a big shift for our students, for our teachers, because in the past, we were able to focus on one objective a day or one standard at a time, but with the Missouri Learning Standards, we have to cluster those and work with them in a much deeper, more exploratory manner. In addition to that, we'll do argumentative literacy, you've heard Dr. Green talk about that in his, his Smart Goes. In argumentative literacy, you look at both reading, writing, and speaking, and what's key to that is students to be able to identify facts that will validate the argument that they're trying to make. It can no longer be, they can, the validation can no longer be made on assumptions. And so to monitor this, we'll be doing walkthroughs, and then we'll also be administering end-of-quarter assessments to assess this particular curriculum and making sure that it's actually, the curriculum is, our assessments are assessing the standards of what we want our students to actually know. Now, in order for us to continue to make this progress, our teachers are doing a good job, but we need to work at even improving instruction more. And so we have used Bob Marzano's framework, which you see here in front of you. This framework comes from the arts and science of teaching, he's taken years of data, years of research, and he's put together this particular framework. And we're going to look particularly at the blue boxes. We feel that probably in the past, we've spent most of our time interacting with new knowledge. That's a logical thing for us to do when it comes to teaching. You're obviously introducing new knowledge to students, and so you spend the bulk of your time in that area. But as we have found from this structure, in order for us, our students to really get deeper into the learning process, we're going to have to move over to those other two blue boxes, those other two columns. So our curriculum is actually laid out to address this. We ask our teachers to start with interacting with new knowledge, but we're going to be working with them throughout this year to develop their skills in the area of instruction, so they're practicing and deepening new knowledge, and they're also doing activities and various projects with students, so they're generating and testing hypotheses along the way. This is a list of the professional development topics that we will be working with our staff throughout this year with, as we have an opportunity to meet with them. It'll also be the area that our instructional coaches, and we have changed their job description, changed their role this year, they are functioning as teaching methods coaches. And these coaches now will work in the area of the new curriculum and helping our teachers in demonstrating lessons to them and co-teaching with them so they have an understanding of it. These methods coaches will also work with our teachers to make sure that they understand how to incorporate those digital resources, so they're actually, again, demonstrating and actually working with them in a one-to-one manner to understand those digital resources. And finally, then, we will have our methods coaches working with teachers to go beyond the resources and curriculum that we're providing to explore other areas on their own that will enhance the instructional program for our students. So that is the, many of the areas that we'll be addressing in the area of curriculum instruction. And certainly invite any questions you might have about any of those topics.
I heard you say at the beginning of your presentation, that you feel like the data teams, as they were led and informed by our instructional coaching staff, is what you give credit for a lot of the gains that we saw, that it really, as a strategy, paid dividends for us. Did I hear you correctly?
That, I, if it wasn't for the work of our staff, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish what we did.
So how, do you have any evidence at this point to suggest that our instructional coaching work produces more benefits on the math side of the house, ELA side of the house? I'm just wondering, are there areas where they're uniquely effective, and we certainly should be double downing, doubling down on that, whereas there are other areas where we didn't see the same level of efficacy, and we should be identifying other strategies to offer the level of support that our teachers need?
My answer to that would be based on perceptual data. I wouldn't have any, I would have to explore that much more deeply. Most of our instructional coaches have expertise in the area of ELA. Many of them have been attending special courses that Dr. Davis has been providing in this area. I'm going to, my perception would be that they would have taken that knowledge that they gained being in those courses, and they've been able to apply that in the classrooms with teachers. Now, this year, what we're doing is we're expanding that and doing much more work in the area of math and also science. So my assumption would be those areas, ELA would probably be where they had the greatest impact.
So I assumed you were going to say that, but the data doesn't suggest that. You know, so when we look at our ELA and, you know, math, you know, scores in terms of our academic achievement, you know, math scores are growing, you know, ELA scores remain flat. And so, does that, I'm just, I'm having a hard time understanding where the efficacy of our, and trust me, I'm a diehard believer along with you, I've read some of the same articles that you all have circulated or probably read, but I'm just wondering, how do, your perceptions about the efficacy of the strategy, of this as the kind of a dominant strategy match up with the fact that math has been moving forward for several years in a row, but we have a very flat trend, and flat, I mean, you know, so it's technically a decline, but, you know, not by anything statistically significant, you know, but I don't understand how your description of efficacy around this strategy matches up with the data.
I would say that, you know, I think first thing you have to look in context, last year, we had zero points in ELA. I think that's not necessarily the case this year. I think also we have to look at the state, the context of the state. The state decline, we leveled off, so I think there's a relativity factor there to put in context when we are talking about the impact in ELA, if you're dealing with a situation which overall there was a decline, we, you know, stayed about the same, something else was at play there, which the state is still trying to figure out what happened in that area. So I think the literacy plan that we put in place, and the instructional coaches alongside that literacy plan, helped us not decline like most of the others did, but that's really about all we could say, but that's where the context in which that sits.
General question about feedback from the teachers around the increased assessments and the professional development, what has been their feedback? And then the second part of my question is around the parents, and how have the parents responded to the increased assessments, and are, will they be, will those assessments be uploaded into the Tyler system, and how will they kind of know how their kids are doing along the way?
Formative assessments are tip, will, would be something like me just asking the students as they walk out of the classroom, maybe their multiplication tables. They would not be the formal type assessments that we would, certainly nothing like the NWA, nothing like the end-of-course assessments.
So how is that, if a kid doesn't know their multiplication tables, how is that communicated to parents?
Through their typical parent-teacher conference and/or phone calls home, like what I would probably do if you all were my class and you were exiting the classroom and kept going through there, and all of a sudden, you know, Mr. Howe kept coming up, not knowing the questions that I'd be asking, then I would probably be wanting to do some extra work with him and/or contact his parents and work with him on that, those skills.
And the-
I would just also add that the formative assessment is a, is a real quick temperature gauge or check for understanding, get it, this is what I taught, and I'm trying to see if students, in a quick survey, a straw poll, to see if they really got it, so that I know if I need to change instructions. It's really, it's really a gauge for the teacher to say, I, 60% of the class in this kind of a straw poll didn't seem to get what I thought I taught, so then I know I need to go back and reteach and not just push forward the next day. So it's that kind of very, almost unscientific, but it is still very meaningful, feedback from students saying, we didn't get it, the concept you were trying to teach, so therefore teacher, the teacher uses that to say, not the students aren't capable, the teacher uses that to say, I need to do something differently. That's the-
Thank you for that clarification, but tell me a little bit about the teacher feedback around the, you talked about shifts that are occurring with the teachers, and so can you kind of give me some, some of their feedback around those shifts?
We're just getting started in, with this particular program and the types of professional development we're doing on Wednesday evenings, we're collecting information from them. One of the things that we have already decided is we need to make sure that we give them time to process the new information as well. You saw a long list of topics we want to cover, we might not get to all those topics this year, because we need to make sure that, just like students, teachers have a chance to master the skill before we ask them to do something else. So our initial feedback is, don't give us stuff too fast, give us a chance to work with it.
How do you identify your instructional coaches, and what kind of work do you do to ensure that they've got, they both have the skills and their instructional leaders and their knowledge is well evidenced, but also that they have the relationship, the ability to develop the kind of relationships that are needed to support teach?
I'm going to give you a quick answer, and then if it's all right with Dr. Green, I'll give, put some information in Friday's packet, because we have a very, we adopted this two years ago, we have a very extensive process, they go through about a half-day of interviews, and during, there's a variety of types of interviews that they participate in, they even have to do a demonstration lesson for the evaluators as they go throughout that half-day. There's specific skills that we're looking for as we're observing them during the interview process, as well as the demonstration lesson that they're doing. And then based upon that information, we have a ranking scale that's based upon a rubric, and then we provide the results of that to the principal, and then the principal has the opportunity of interviewing the instructional coach, and they have a series of questions that we suggest, although they can ask their own questions as well. And then based upon that information, ultimately, then the principals have the decision as to whether or not they want to hire a particular person to be their coach. And I can, I'll provide you with a series of questions as well as the complete process.
My question was about the NWA, are we still in the pilot part of it? And again, if we're, which grades are we doing, are we only doing K through 12? And then when is your timeline for your results that you did the NWA last year versus compared to your timeline, what's your timeline for this year?
We're giving it three times this year, we're just finishing up the window, okay? And then as that window, as we're wrapping up the window of this first testing period, then on the 26th, we're bringing in all of the K through eight teachers and working with them on how they analyze that data. And then there was one other part-
So are you still in the pilot version of the program?
No.
Okay, so we're rolling it out now to your K through eight, correct?
Right.
Okay, so when will you be, what's your timeline comparing last year's data with the first testing, temperature gauging this year?
Real quickly, do we, do we do the NWEA for anything above second grade last year?
No. It wouldn't, yeah.
Three through eight?
K through eight.
K through eight this year.
Uh-huh.
You did K through two last year. Right. So would you have any, once the first testing is rolled out after September, would you compare one test versus the test this year for K through two?
No.
Not at all? Okay.
No.
Then after, okay, so the timeline for the, now rolling out from K through eight, how are we getting this information to parents, like Melissa was asking, on the NWA aspect? Because I think that's a very great tool to utilize, because it's very specifically based on what the child is needing or on- based on what the child is needing or improving and it gives very, very close accurate data of the growth that that child can make within a year, two years. And it's very specific to giving examples of what they need to work on. How are we also tying this into our Tyler, which will give access to parents? How, has there been any discussion about that? And kind of also following up on what Melissa asked earlier, what, hold on one moment. I'm going through when you said on the curriculum alignment, doing walkthroughs will be used to monitor. What did you exactly mean? Walkthroughs on monitoring the children or walkthroughs on monitoring how the coaching is going for our teachers or teachers teaching to the students? That, I wasn't quite clear on what you meant by that statement.
Probably all of, all of that will enter in to some degree. As we would, as I'd go in to visit a building and I'd go into a teacher's classroom, I'd identify, what are they teaching? And then I would look at the curriculum and I would say, are they, according to the pacing guide, are they on the place approximately where they need to be? Are they teaching the standard that's actually indicated there in the curriculum that should be taught? Are they actually using the strategies and activities or are they using comparable activities and strategies? And then in doing so, you would look at the students, obviously, are the students doing the activity? So all of those pieces would be, contribute to what we'd be looking for to validate that the curriculum is actually being taught.
So in communication to, I know this is where we had the issue with Tyler, what are we doing for parents that do not speak English, that do not read, that are illiterate? And then for our new families that never had any education, formal education foundation? And then also our sped parents, our special ed parents? What are we doing to communicate these tools and being made available through NWA for K, our K through eight, to get this message out to them or how to understand it?
If it'd be agreeable, could we potentially get a, in the next couple of weeks, just get an update in the Friday packet on, on what we're doing to make Tyler accessible?
Yes.
Would that be?
Because that's a long answer.
A lot there that we would need to consider. Miss Montero, would that be agreeable to you?
Yes, it would. I just want to continue to bring the focus on that Tyler did not have that capability of implementing the different languages because I, I think that's a very important question to keep raising since the Tyler can be text to the parents, but it, there's no translation that translate into, say for example, Burmese or Vietnamese, some of our harder search languages. And then the parent can't text that in their language and it reverses back to English to the teacher. So that's why I'm really concerned about getting this so we have extra help and support for our children and our teachers at school to implement and growth and especially in English language arts and, and math and all the subjects that are really needing. But that's a very big concern of mine that we still haven't dealt with in Tyler.
Okay. Dr. Green?
The third and final component of our look at the, not only just where we've been, but what we're going to do about what we see in the data will be shared by Dr. Anne Sanders. As you can see, the title of this part of the presentation, the unswerving focus on student achievement, which comes out of Mike Smoker's book, Results Now. And so she will be talking about, from the school leadership perspective, principals and working with our teachers, how we will drill down and move things forward from where we are. Dr. Sanders?
Thank you, Dr. Green. Thank you, Mr. Goen. Good evening, Chair Hile, Superintendent Green, members of the board and community supporters. You have heard up to this point, information on data that has been presented by Dr. Morello. And this is truly a celebration tonight. We're not where we need to be, but we, if you recall, we have adopted the no excuses philosophy. And we did not make excuses, even though ninety-one percent of our kids are on free and reduced lunches. Even though a large percentage of our children come from trauma-inflamed environments. Even though some of our children's, children do not come from environments that are text rich or that there are a number of books. We made no excuses, yet we did achieve ninety-two point five points. And definitely we should be pleased with that, but not rest on our toes. And so, Dr. Green has made the statement before that in many ways, we have defied gravity. And the gravity is, is that in the state, let's put it in context, in the state, most of the districts lost or went or fell behind. There were only a small few that launched forward in their points and KCPS was one of those districts. You should be proud of the leadership that you have provided and we are proud of the leadership that has been provided by our principals and the hard work that is going on in our classrooms each and every day. What we also heard was the fact from Mr. Goen is that he and his team has been involved in the arduous task of aligning our curriculum and ensuring that it would, that every child would have a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And not only that, that every staff member would be better prepared to deliver and to implement that curriculum. And so we come to school leadership and what is the role of school leadership? And we say that it is this unswerving focus on student achievement. So we're going to begin, sometimes Dr. Green says I'm professorial, but I do like to make analogies. Many of you know about the Sankova. The Sankova is a mythical bird that is revered in Ghana. And what, if you have ever seen a picture of a Sankova, it is a bird that is picking up a golden apple on its back, but is going to move forward. And the idea is, is that you reflect on the past and you take the best of the past as you chart a successful future. And so, just like that Sankova, here in KCPS, we're going to look back at the 2014 MAP data. That's what you're looking at right now, the results, and identify the areas of refinement, not only by grade level, by building, by content, but what we have the great, I'd say good fortune is, is that we can look at by student. And so behind all of these numbers and behind all of this talk, what we have to always remember is there are students and each and every one of us want to ensure that those students are making the kind of growth. And then you saw the one student that had started in below basic and they made a meteoric rise of about a hundred points and they still were in basic, but they made a huge gain. That is a celebration for that student. Behind that number, you may be saying, did you make any progress? And I think we'd say, we darn sure did. So as we look at the past to chart a future, we need to be very straight with ourselves to look at it very objectively, this data, and say, there are some areas that we do need to refine. There are some improvements that need to be made. If there were no improvements to be made, we would be totally, we'd receive one hundred of, percent of those points. And so, we're asking that the teachers review the 2014 MAP data and for their current students in order to chart their instructional course for this school year. And so, we're not honoring just the past, but we're looking to build to the future. One of the things that we're going to be doing is, I think you have to think about, what is the game plan? That's what you're kind of asking us tonight. What's the airtight prescription for monitoring these schools? And so, we say we have to retain some pieces and we have to refine some other strategies. One of the biggest impactful results that we had or saw was that with data consults. And you've heard us talk about them numerous times. That's where the principal comes in. He gives the state of his school or her school. They talk about the ABCs, that's not only attendance, behavior, and then the core academics. We also then ask the teacher or the principal to have the same kind of data consult with the teacher. And then the teacher talks to the student and the student and the teacher talk to the parent. But we also have data teams and Mr. Rogers asked about those data teams and we're going to talk a little bit about them. The data teams this year, when you talk about extending, going forward, like that Sankova, in the past, we would give the data teams feedback and we'd have just one group go and look. This year, we're going to have them to self-assess and there'll be some, they'll self-assess themselves on effectiveness. Then the principal will self-assess. There will be district persons who will go in and self-assess the data teams and our friends from DESI are going in and self-assess or assessing the data teams. Now, in the past, we've not necessarily brought those data teams in and said, there've been all of these evaluators and you said you were here and this one said you were here and this one said you were there. Let's talk about what the commonalities or the areas of refinement that you need. And so therefore, we're going to have data consults with them of what is it, what is the support that you need? Because we all agree here that we cannot fire our way to excellence. But we can support and sometimes we have to make a very tough decision. And that is, maybe we have to say that you're on the wrong seat on the bus. But the first is to give the most support that we possibly can and to work with the human capital that we have, not only in our principal's leadership role, but in our classrooms as well. And so, as we continue to retain and refine, we'll move to looking at our, mapping our staff. You've heard us say that we will map our staff and that is that, and this is not one stagnant term, that a person is green, but they may be green on student engagement, but then on content knowledge, they may be yellow where they need support. So we map our staff and that is on different content areas, different skill areas, but we'll also be mapping our data teams so that we can leverage our resources in order to provide the support in the areas with those, whether it be staff and/or data teams, where the need is the greatest. We will continue our school-wide assessment teams, that was when we called them the SWATs, where we work with struggling teachers. But there is a SWAT too that Dr. Green envisioned and that is where we will go and look at our very best teachers, the teachers that have the most success and ask them, what is it that you did differently? Why on this item analysis were you able to move your students forward? We will systematize this implementation of the student being the CEO of his or her own learning. And you're going to hear a little bit more about that in my talk about parent teacher conferences. We're going to, and we already have standardized our common visitation form every month, the members of my very great team, that happens to be Mr. Darryl Davis, Dr. Anthony Lewis, Dr. Joe Nemeth, myself. We go and visit the, the schools of which we have oversight and we take a common visitation form. This year, we developed a rubric so that we could do a comparative basis with those. And how are we rating them and how are their performance so that we can try to align that? I've heard a lot of talk tonight about these building-specific INSEP five goals. And if you recall, last year, that every school was given an INSEP five goal in all of the areas that we gain points for or can be awarded points for. And what the assessment team does is that they look at the performance and they look at, the larger picture is, how do we get the entire district to be able to be fully accredited? And so, if every person in every building reaches the goal that has been set for them, then the entire district will be fully accredited. And so, with those building-specific INSEP five goals, we'll retain that opportunity. Now, interestingly enough, on Friday, Dr. Morello handed out the APR points by school, by building. And what school leadership, before the end of that weekend, had sent out a series of questions that we had gathered together in a common manner. And these were the kinds of questions that we asked them, having looked at your goal, the information that you got back on your performance on the 2014 MAP scores, what are your goals for this year? What are you going to set? What strategies would you use? What is the metric that you will use? What are the challenges that are rarely perceived and how do you mitigate those challenges? And how do you hold each staff member accountable? How will you ensure that the students are the CEOs of their own learning? So, once they already have this information, then how will they utilize the information? Because a lot of people say that you are badly rich, but implementation poor or analysis poor. And so we are, we set timelines, tomorrow, not tomorrow, September 12th, which is Friday, we will hear from each one of our schools as to what their plan is and we'll be reviewing that as we go out with them. As we continue looking forward, we're talking about what is going to be the, give us the biggest bang, not only in points, but for our students, is to move them across toward the advanced category. To move the below basic out of below basic to basic or proficient. To move the, the basic from being basic to proficient or advanced and the proficient to advanced and then the advanced, don't let them slide back. And so that all of our students will be able to, as I said, behind the numbers, there is a student, there is a child that we are serving. We have looked at attendance and we have some early interventions already. We've been giving data to the schools. We have been looking at our processes to ensure that when we go to see a principal, that when we're asking them for information, that it's based on accuracy so that we are not jumping the gun and asking them to do something that they may have already done. We also, as you know, we have approved the use of, or the hiring of behavioral interventionists. And we're leveraging those behavioral interventionists. And we're requiring, requiring every school to have a behavioral plan, a school-wide behavioral plan. We want to know. We don't care if it's BIST, we don't care if it's PPISS, but what is your plan to continue to manage behavior rather than to resort to just a quick suspension? There are some new components because if you do what you've always done, you'll get what you've always gotten. Another, what we have gotten in the past has been increases. We know that the temperature in the water has definitely increased and we must increase then and intensify our efforts. And we must work smarter, not necessarily harder, because we're all working 24/7, it appears. So, one of the new components is the SWAT team too, or the school-wide assessment team too, where you heard me say that we would go and talk to our effective teachers and ask them questions. We said that we will leverage peer feedback through the data teams. I always say there are more students than teachers or more teachers than administrators. And so, by working in peer groups and in a non-threatening environment.